And the Region Four.
Not the Region Four then?
And I can find it in our GRDA and send it to you.
Yeah.
If you can, throw your arms up in the air and let me know or. Abby, can you hear me? Okay, good. As long as I've got a thumb, I'm in good shape. All right, today is Thursday, April the 22nd, 2021. We're having a special meeting agenda. Discussion with business owners and Summit Bechtel Boy Scout Reserve regarding the impact on local businesses and taxability. The reason for this is because of the following. Code 11-3-9I states, "The county commission of any county where such a property is located shall report to the Joint Committee on Government and Finance every five years after the effective date of the section. The report shall include information on unfair business competition resulting from the establishment of nonprofit status and include a report of the cost and benefits to the county of the tax exemption and the associated fee, including an audit of that county's use of net revenues." So, that's what we're going over in a nutshell. I'm John Bruneman. I'm the President of the Commission. To my right is Commissioner Luises. And to my left, Commissioner Taylor. So Commissioner Taylor went to a meeting and she brought this to us. So I am going to let her go ahead with what she'd like to.
Well, the meeting I went to was one between, was a presentation that the head of Business Development at the Summit gave to the board members of the local chambers of commerce and visitors bureaus. And it had a group of things, and that's not the only reason I thought this meeting relevant. I thought this meeting relevant after we received the request from the Auditor's Office to give input whether the tax exempt status was harming local businesses unfairly, unfairly competing with local businesses. But I didn't feel like we could answer that question until we had a meeting with the local business owners and the Boy Scouts. The Boy Scouts, as everybody knows, is fighting bankruptcy suit and is dealing with those sorts of things. And then, of course, in the county, we're constantly battling budget woes that everybody's heard about. So I felt like before we made this certification to the legislature through the Auditor's Office that we should hear from the people affected and also hear from the Boy Scouts about the projects that it has planned to hopefully bring more business into the community and engage our community businesses further than it has in the past. So I've invited the person who gave the presentation to us, Bill, who's on the line, to talk to us a little bit about some of the things he has planned and how he envisions engaging our local businesses in those events.
Hi, you open the speaker?
Yeah.
And if you would, please identify yourself so that we know who we're talking to.
So absolutely, my name is Bill Garrett and I'm the Director of Business Development at the Summit. I've been about a 25-year employee of the Boy Scouts of America. Happy to say that I started my BSA career in Fayette and Raleigh County in 1995 and I got to come back home. So happy to be with you. With me is Amy Grace, who is here. Just to, you know, if there's any questions about financial numbers, she can generally answer that. She's a longtime employee of the Summit and serves as our controller.
Bill, were you able to find the email you mentioned to me from some office within Fayette County that made that interpretation about the hotel motel tax?
I was and I did forward it. I had screenshots of that email and I think I forwarded that to you a few days after our meeting.
I didn't receive it, so I'll have to check.
Okay, yeah, I can re-forward that to you. I just, you know, if you could perhaps text or email me at bill.garrett@scouting.org just to make sure I didn't have a typo in entering your email.
Can you send it to Ruth now?
Could you repeat your email, Bill?
I'll get it, I'll get it to Ruth.
Okay.
So I've not been to one of these meetings, so if I talk out of turn, please let me know. The email that is being referred to is an email string between Amy, who's with me here, and an individual in the Tax Department at Fayette County. And it was before we opened one of our lodges and asking about the occupancy tax. I think that's at a 6% rate. And so we were told that we weren't a hotel, so that, in a nutshell, I'll sum it up. And we weren't open to the public like a hotel would be where you would make a reservation and come and join us at the lodge. Since it was not, that was not able to be done, then the occupancy tax didn't apply. So that was the interpretation of the email from Fayette County. And then to double-check that, I think we engaged with tax attorney, an outside tax attorney and our attorney, just to make sure that everyone was kind of on the same page. So that's a general overview of that particular email.
So basically it was because of you weren't open to the public?
Correct, so the only time that our lodging is used is if someone would rent the property. So a couple of reasons that people would stay here is if the property is rented for another use. If that is unrelated to the mission of the Boy Scouts, we would pay sales tax on that because those folks would not be tax exempt. And then we pay about 1.2% special tax, which I understand, and I haven't been here very long, that that gets split between the tourism departments and the counties. So we pay into 1.2%, we pay 1.2% of unrelated business revenues to the state and then the state filters that out, however, you know, however that's set up. So we would pay those taxes, but so one way, if people rent our property, then they're allowed to stay here. The other ways that we use the lodging is for scouting groups. So this week, we have folks from across the country here for scouting university. So this is their introductory training as new employees to the Boy Scouts of America. Amy has, you know, while I'm, while I guess I'm kind of making that statement, the occupancy of this, the building that we're in today, there are 41 rooms, about 40,000 nights available here. And Amy, I think we were way less than 1% occupancy for the time that it's been open. And that's due to the fact that it's only been open for a year. And the first few months of the time that it's been open, we planned to open it in March of last year and obviously COVID put a big dent in that. So the occupancy of this has been very, very small for the last 12 months. And Amy has kind of the numbers if you need to know those.
Would you tell my colleagues and for the purposes of this meeting, some of the projects you have planned, like you presented at the conference I attended?
Certainly, so I consider the Summit to be very good at kind of what I call four buckets or four pieces of general business. The first one I hope everyone knows about and hopefully has seen a benefit from is scouting. So during the time we've been opened, we've hosted two national jamborees and one international jamboree in 2019. We had planned a jamboree for this year, but COVID got in the way of it. In those off-years where we're not hosting major events that bring in 40,000 or 50,000 folks, we do bring in folks from across the country to participate in our high adventure and summer camp. And that averages about 4,000 to 5,000 folks and we're trying to grow that piece of business throughout, you know, my tenure here and beyond that. So that's the scouting bucket in a nutshell. The other thing that we're doing is trying to get the public to use the facilities more so than they've been able to. Happy to announce one of our partners, I think is on the line, a representative. He's, you know, we've worked together to create a partnership between Adventures on the Gorge and the Summit where we allow folks who visit Adventures to come here and do a little bit of our shooting sports, pistols, rifles, shotguns, things of that nature. We're exploring other ways that we can engage partners beyond Adventures in allowing them to use our property for extras and add-ons to their business. We also do a little bit of conference business where we bring in folks from really across the state and the region to have conferences and meetings here. We had about $2 million canceled last year because of COVID, but those are conferences that range from, you know, 25 to 100 folks that would come here and use the facilities. The second, the third bucket of business is what I call venue rentals. We are entering, I think, year number three of our relationship with Spartan Games. That event was canceled last year. It is scheduled for late July, early August of this year. I'm sorry, I think that is August. My apologies for saying July. It's scheduled for August of this year. We're very happy, I think that's brought a lot of folks into the community that otherwise wouldn't be eating at our restaurants or staying in the hotels that we have here. The second big piece of business we do that's very similar is we rent a portion of our property to Racer X Productions, otherwise known as GNCC, it's a motocross race. We're entering year number three with them and that brings about 6,000 to 7,000 folks from the regional footprint here, really Ohio, West Virginia, Virginia, Carolinas, and a few folks from the Northeast come here for a weekend and race ATVs, motorcycles, and mountain bikes. We're hosting a small Jeep event this year, an Airstream Conference. So those are the venue rentals. We're trying to grow that piece of business because, you know, I see a good value in bringing those type of, I call them the little smaller events to Southern West Virginia and the Summit because that makes an impact on, you know, not only the Summit, but restaurants and hotels and things of that nature. The last piece of business that we're trying to bring online and we're working on an event for this fall that right now we're calling the Freedom Fest, so that event will be held in conjunction with GNCC Motocross Race. And we started out thinking that we should have a little music fest here, but we've decided to go in a little different direction because of the setup of the Summit and Adventure will be the headliner. And we would kind of view this as an outdoor trade show, if you will, where we would have folks like Yamaha, Polaris, BAS for fishing, Cabela's, Bass Pro, who are together now. Those type of venues, I'm sorry, exhibitors coming here, sharing their products and knowledge with the public. While the race is going on, it would be open to others as well in the community. And then because this event will be on September 11th, we're trying to bring in a little tribute with some guest speakers, a little bit of entertainment and kind of end on a solemn note to remember and the victims of 9/11 on the 20th anniversary, but also pay tribute to the folks that continue to serve and keep us safe, those first responders and military families. Trying to do a little something special for them and really thank them for 20 years of very, very hard service that has kept our country going over the last 20 years. Our goal is to bring in 20,000 to 30,000 folks from the immediate region. We consider our immediate region about a day's drive from the Summit. That's about 60% of the population. We had a good meeting yesterday with some partners and folks in the community. And, you know, what we're trying to do is not only help the Summit remain viable for our communities, expand on our $70 million or so annually impact to the communities, but really trying to get to the granular level and engage food vendors from the community in these events so they can frankly share the income and the opportunity to get in front of a large crowd. And we're trying to figure out how to fill up the 2,200 or so hotel rooms within the two or three county region. So we had some very, very good discussions on that. So the bottom line with that piece of business and our venue rentals, I told the group that we want to be a good spark in the economic engine of the Raleigh, Fayette, Summers County, Southern West Virginia area. That's our goal, it's really twofold.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why do you always refer to Raleigh County first when you're in the middle of Fayette County where we're losing our high ends on taxes?
Well, my apologies for that, you know, there was no disrespect meant at all. I think some words just flow out different than others, so no disrespect, but we're here to make sure that we.
Not only you, but every event that's been on, it's Raleigh County, Fayette County. When the last time I looked, it's three miles away from my farm. And it's horrible to have a county mentioned that it's not even located in. Oh no, but everybody has to say Raleigh County first. That's the first thing I got for you and I'm going to calm down before I go into the rest.
Okay. So I tried to give you a good overview of what we're doing here at the Summit and how we believe that it will help our local communities and our families.
Bill, how do you envision engaging more of, I mean, AOTD is a big organization. How do you envision engaging our smaller businesses and promoting them to the people who visit the Summit?
Yeah, so we've already started doing that a little bit by listening to several things that people can do while they're here. But it's really me, you know, I've been here since last August, so it's really me getting out and meeting these folks and finding out how they want to be involved. I think that's a very, very important question. Some people may not want to be involved with what we're doing because they have other things going on in their line of business. But it's us learning what people want to bring to the table and what they want to get out of the relationship with the Summit. And the question is, how can we help each other move forward? One example, I believe here in the last few weeks, we sent out a note through our local chambers to ask people how they want to be involved with our family camping operations where we're bringing families in and introducing them to scouting. But also, you know, do businesses want to come and sell craft items or things that are related to family camping? So that note, I think, went out in the last, within the last month or two. So it's really asking them what they want to, how they want the relationship to be.
Have you worked with our New River Gorge CVB and our regional Southern West Virginia CVB? I know they were both, the heads of both of those were at the meeting I attended, but have you worked with them to figure out how to promote our local businesses without directly?
Yeah, so Lisa Strater was over yesterday and we had a very, very good, robust conversation and I won't speak for her, but we talked about how we could help each other and how we could help our local lodging and restaurants and other businesses. So I think we started a very, very good conversation about that. Our plan is to get together with her and a few others every two weeks so we can really figure out and dial down, dial in what we can do to make that impact. As far as the New River, and I'll probably get the name wrong, so I apologize in advance, but the New River Development Authority, we're trying to engage Jenna and she and I just, because of scheduling, haven't connected yet. So I'm not sure if she's on here, but if you guys know Jenna, you know, tell her I'm trying to connect with her. And, you know, those are only two folks that were, or three folks. You mentioned AOTD, that's only three folks who we're working with. We're trying to build relationships with others and that takes a little bit of time, but that's what I spend a lot of my days doing.
Becky Sullivan is the head of our county CVB. Lisa is on the call, I just texted Becky, I'm not sure if she's on the call or not, but, okay, she is on the call.
Hey Bill, I went to a, when I was first elected, I've been here since 2019. I went to a meeting that basically summarized again exactly what you just said. And I think what you're telling me is y'all still haven't come to a resolution or a commitment or a solution to work in the way you're still working towards as far as involving the other business owners of Fayette County. Is that correct or not? I know you said you've only been here since last year. I heard the same speech, what you talked about 2019, when I went to the Summit when I was first elected. So I just wanted to bend that hard to get other people involved besides AOGP or ICOM Class 6.
So I can't speak to anything that was said prior to last August, so I don't know what those conversations are. I will tell you that, you know, in the first part of my tenure, I really tried to spend making connections with our folks in scouting. Expand on our seventy million dollar or so annually. Impact to the communities, but really trying to get to the granular granular level. And engage food vendors from the community in these events so they can. Frankly, share the income and the opportunity to get in front of a large crowd. And we're trying to figure out how to fill up the twenty two hundred or so hotel rooms. Within within the two or three county region. So we had some very, very good discussions on that. So the bottom line with that piece of business and our and our venue rentals. I I told the group that we want to be a good spark in the economic engine of the Raleigh Fayette. Summers County, Southern West Virginia area. That's that's our goal. It's really twofold.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why do you always refer to Raleigh County first? When you're in the middle of Fayette County where we're losing our high ends on taxes?
Well, I my apologies for that. You know, that there was no disrespect meant at all. I think some some words just flow out different than others. So no disrespect. But we're here to to make sure that that we.
Not only you, but every event that's been on. It's Raleigh County, Fayette County. When the last time I looked. It's three miles away from my farm. And. It's it's horrible to have a county mentioned that it's not even located in. Oh, no, but everybody has to say Raleigh County first. That's the first thing I got for you, and I'm going to calm down before I go into the rest.
Okay. So I I tried to give you a good overview of what we're what we're doing here at the summit and and how we believe that it it will help our local communities. And our families.
Bill, how do you how do you envision engaging? More of, I mean, AOTD is a big organization. How do you envision engaging our smaller businesses and promoting them to the people who visit the summit?
Yeah, so we've already started doing that a little bit by listening several things that people can do while they're here. But it's really me, you know, I've been here since last August, so it's it's really me getting out and meeting these folks and finding out. How they want to be involved. I think that's a very, very important question. Some people may not want to be involved with what we're doing because. There they have other things going on in their line of business. But it's us learning what people want to bring to the table and what they want to get out of the relationship with the summit. And and the question is, how can we help each other move forward? One example, I I believe here in the last few weeks, we we sent out a note through our local chambers. To ask people how they want to be involved. With our family camping operations where we're bringing families in and. And and introducing them to scouting. But also, you know, do businesses want to come and 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 sell craft items or? Things that are related to to family camping. So that that note, I think, went out in the last. Within the last month or two. So it's really asking them what they want to, how they want the relationship to be.
Have you worked with our New River Board CBB and our regional Southern West Virginia CBB? I know they were. Both the heads of both of those were at the meeting I attended, but have you worked with them to? Figure out how to promote our local businesses without directly?
Yeah, so Lisa Strater was over yesterday and we had a very, very good, robust conversation and I won't speak to for her, but we. We talked about how we could help each other and and how we could. Help our local lodging and restaurants. And and other businesses. So I think we we started a very, very good conversation. About that. Our plan is to get together with with her and a few others every two weeks. So we can, we can really figure out and dial down, dial in what we can do to make that that impact. As far as the New River, and I'll probably get the name wrong, so I apologize in advance, but the New River Development Authority. We're trying to engage Jenna. And and she and I just because of scheduling haven't connected yet. So I'm not sure if she's on here, but. If you guys know Jenna. You know, tell her I'm trying to connect with her. And you know, those are only two folks that were or three folks. You mentioned AOTG. That's only three folks who are working with. We're trying to build relationships with others. And that takes a little bit of time, but that's what I spend a lot of my my days doing.
Becky Sullivan is the head of our county CBB. But Lisa is on the call. I just texted Becky. I'm not sure if she's on the call or not, but okay, she is on the call.
Hey, Bill, I went to a, when I was first elected, I've been here since twenty nineteen. I went to a meeting that basically summarized again exactly what you just said. And I think what you're telling me is y'all still haven't come to a. Resolution or a or a commitment or or a solution. To working the way you're still working towards as far as involving. The other business owners of Fayette County. Is that correct or not? I know you said you only been here since last year. I heard the same speech, what you talked about twenty nineteen when I went to the summit when I was first elected.
Yes.
Does it, I just wanted to bend that hard in to get. Other people involved besides AOGP or Icom Class Six.
So I can't speak to anything that was said prior to last August, so I don't know what those conversations are. I will tell you that, you know, in the first part of my tenure, I really tried to spend making connections with our folks. In scouting. I've worked with our staff to figure out how we can. Really expand beyond scouting. And now the phase that I'm in now is is really putting some. Putting some details around how we could work with with our local community. I will tell you that as a West Virginian. Who lived here for the first thirty plus years of my life, I'm truly committed. To 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 the state, to the summit and to the Boy Scouts of America. So I I I really don't know what happened with that prior to my arrival, but. My commitment is working, working with folks in our local community. To get them engaged in the business of the summit and 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 figuring out how we can help each other.
Okay, the next question I've got, you mentioned Class Six. Brought some people out to the shooting range. And they used a shooting range, correct?
I did say that, yes.
How many people did they bring?
So far, we've had about eight customers, I believe.
Eight?
Yes.
What did they pay?
So they paid, I think it's a hundred dollars. It really depends on what what they. What type of shooting they do, but let's say an average of a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars each?
Correct.
You mentioned conferences, doing conferences out there for businesses and stuff. Correct?
Yes, we do that.
Rooms and stuff like that. Do you have a lot of them?
So in the past year, we have not. We had, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, about two million dollars worth of business that was canceled last year. Because of COVID and and that we were still feeling the effects of that. The only conferences that we've had probably in the last twelve months. Have been scouting conferences where we at most had twenty to twenty five individuals. Attending scouting university. Again, those are. Those are our employees across the nation who come here to take a class for a week. So that's the only business that we've done in conferencing for the last twelve months.
Well, last year, the ones that canceled on you, where where was it coming from? How did you get get the? Them to have a conference at your place? Was they out of state? Was they local? Where was they from?
So it's a mix of local and out of state, and I don't have the breakdown, so I can't say it's fifty fifty, sixty forty, but. It's it's a mix. And I would say the higher percentage are folks from from out of the the state of West Virginia, but I don't have the exact number of that.
How many can you, how many people can you entertain on a conference at one time?
For a conference, I I think that to do a really good conference, it would be in the order of three hundred would be be our max. And that max is not. It would be, we couldn't accommodate three hundred people in a conference setting in 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 the lodge. But we could, we could, we have classroom space for that many people. So if we would have over probably. If we have over fifty, sixty people who want to stay on property in a lodge, we would have to engage with. A a local hotel or or lodge or cabins.
Now that you mentioned rentals. Can you, can we elaborate on that? I mean, I know you talked about the rentals. I think even. Did the moto races, did the motocross, did they rent your property in order to have the moto race? How did that work?
Yes, so they they rent, they rent our property and and pay. You know, they're the only other services that they would pay for would be to put the property back together after they're finished. Because we try to have that a very, very low impact event. But we we rent the property to them. And and what we've done in the past for food service, we weren't able to do it this year. Just because of the timing of the event, whether it was going to happen or not. We've engaged local food vendors. Food trucks, things of that nature to come out and 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 sell refreshments and food to to those folks.
Now, do you cater to lodging? On these rentals? Do they stay on your property and lodge on your property?
So most of the folks, I would say maybe fifteen folks out of five thousand stayed here. Some folks stayed in local hotels. I don't have that number because we didn't. We didn't facilitate that. But we we provided information to GNCC in their registration about about what's in the area. Most of the folks, and and a large portion of the folks stayed, brought their own trailers, their RVs.
That's what I was gonna say, that's my next question. Did they stay in the campgrounds or did they stay in the RVs on your property?
So there there were quite a few, and I don't know the number of RVs that stayed on the property, but there were quite a few. We do not, we do not charge individuals. For that race to stay on our property in the RV. That's included in the rental agreement with GNCC. So they pay us a flat rate and and for the ground, and then they do with the ground what they would like.
I got one more question. I'm leading into this and you're probably not going to tell me. What did it cost for them to rent that property so they get all the amenities they got?
About fifty five thousand dollars.
Okay. I appreciate you telling me that, though. I didn't think you was going to tell me that.
Well, I don't know if it's a secret or not, but because.
You know, it's a financial, financial question. Usually when I ask people outside of this place financial questions. I usually get the runaround. They don't want to answer the financial question.
Well, I I think it'd be easy to find because and and for most of that, we probably paid one point two percent. Special tax on that, which which amounted to, what was that, a thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars in September.
So I, you know, for in transparent, for transparency sakes, I'm not, you know, wouldn't be afraid to, I don't know why I wouldn't answer that question.
Now, the next question I have leading from that question.
Okay.
What did the moto race company charge people to race or attend that?
So I think it, while it varies because I can, I'm learning that part of the business because I actually attended one of their races in Georgia. I think their entry here was probably five dollars. But there, but if you're a racer, you pay depending on what class you're in. And 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 whether you're a youth, adult, amateur, pro. So there's there's various charges. But you know, that's not facilitated by the summit. That is, that is through their registration system.
Right. In other words, somebody that's going to stay on the property, the camper may have paid more. Because they they end up camping on the property.
No.
May have paid more to the to whoever the people was that rented it from.
No, that is not correct. They do not, they do not charge their folks, they do not charge their folks for camping. Their charge, so I would tell you, if I remember correctly, what I paid is twenty dollars to get in, and I paid that to drive a Chevy truck through their gates. In Atlanta or outside of Atlanta. And I paid the same rate as somebody with an RV.
Okay, now, one more question. How many people attended that? How many people attended that motocross race? I know you had to keep some type of track of it, or they did.
Yeah, so it was about five thousand, and that's a round number. So let's say it was between four, forty eight hundred and fifty five hundred people. I have that right in front of me.
Five thousand. We're getting a little calculator out here. And they paid fifty five thousand? They rented it for fifty five thousand?
Yes, give or take.
Yeah, that means they would have to have Lisa might pay at least ten dollars a head to break even.
So I think their business, their business model is that most of their expenses are covered by sponsorships. And entry fees, entry fees are different than the gate. I I can't really speak to the entry fees because I'm not a, I'm not a racer, so I didn't didn't pay those. So their model is is their revenue streams are from different areas. It's the gate. Again, there is no charge. They do not charge for camping. And then there are different rates that you would pay whether you're a racer. Or in what class you're in. So and then their final piece of revenue. Would be would be the sponsors that they attract, and and that's not a revenue sharing agreement that we have with them.
Okay, what else do you rent out there besides property?
I, you know, from 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 my standpoint, in the time that I've been here, I don't think we rent anything else. I mean, we might. Generate some revenue if people want to go on a zip line or if they want to. Or they want to buy something in one of our stores. I think those are, those those rentals and retail operations are and. Scouting activities are the main sources of revenue here at the summit.
Now, one more, I I guess I'm done with the moto races. The the seventy million dollar impact to the community. Who puts that together? How how does that, how was that calculated?
So West Virginia University School of Business and Economic put put that together. So included in that would be money that we spend with local vendors. I'll give you an example. I won't tell you the company's name because I'll keep that between us. One of our grass cutting contracts is in excess of three hundred thousand dollars to a local vendor. So what 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 they've done is look at the vendors that we use here in the local community. Look at our payroll, look at our tax base. And then I'm not an expert in this, but they look at this as, you know, what other. Things people are doing while they're here. Are they staying in a hotel? Are they eating in a restaurant? Are we paying taxes on our? Four to five hundred thousand dollars of retail? The answer there is yes. So. They add all those things up and and arrive at that that number.
So in other words, they would include the fifty five thousand, fifty five thousand dollars that the. The moto race company paid to enter to lease a piece of property of yours. Would that be correct?
I I think they would. I I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I think they would probably just consider the the impact that those folks. Bring to the local economy versus what they pay us.
Okay, so all the, all the money you're generating for the for the summit, you're saying would be excluded from their impact study.
So I I I think so, but I don't know that for a fact. But I can, I can, if you want me to do a follow up, I can, I can chat with them to figure that out and I can.
I'd like to know what they're including and where this, where this impact is. And where they're going in in Fayette County.
Sure. So I, you know, I can send if if someone would be so nice and maybe Amy, I think is the. The person that coordinated me coming to this meeting. If she could, if I could get that, I can send the study to you so you can see. You can see the numbers. You can see jamboree year versus non-jamboree year. You can see what we spent for construction, which is quite a bit here at the summit. And and I can just send that study to you. And then take a look at it, and if you have any follow up questions, I'll be happy to work with WVU to to find out how they are right with those numbers.
Okay, you send that to Ruth so we all get it, but the most important thing I'd like you to find out is, to me. If they're using your income as part of the seven seventy million dollars impact to the community.
Okay.
That that tells me a lot right there if they're using your income for the impact study.
Yeah, so. Our income, our income doesn't approach seventy million dollars, so.
I know, but I mean, I said they're using your figure.
Correct.
Part of the seventy million dollar impact, community impact study.
So, yeah, and so that brings up a good statement. If I can just just mention this, you know, when we say we get, you know, X thousands of dollars from a GNCC race, that is not net income to us. Even though we do pay tax on on the revenue. If I would have to, if I would have to guess. You know, that that seventy thousand dollars we received for a weekend is is probably at best break even, and it might be a loss. To to the organization. So just so that everyone on this phone call knows, we we're running about a five and a half million dollar budget deficit every year. We're trying to close the gap on that, obviously. But but I don't want anyone on here to walk away thinking that that seventy thousand dollars is is profit to the summit. You know, per person, per day, it costs us about a hundred and forty dollars to operate. So we can do the math on that real quick, Amy, I guess, and.
I think the commissioners understand that. And the only thing I'm asking for is to see if that's, whether you make money or not, that wasn't my question.
I understand.
My question is whether it is calculated in the study or not.
Okay.
You just told me what you pay vendors is calculated in it.
Right.
That is something I would want to know in it is the income that you do get is calculated because that's not the surrounding community. If you're adding in your income, if if West Virginia University is adding that.
Right, understood.
I would want to know that.
Okay.
That's it. I guess that's all the questions I have.
Okay. First, I apologize, but I would just get tired of hearing Raleigh County first one. Property is located in Fayette County. And it's happened since this place originated. So I just want to start closing the door on that. Second. These, the food vendors that you invite in during your jamborees and world jamboree and. By the way, they didn't have those at Lake Marion in Pennsylvania when I was there several years ago. But. How do you charge them? Are they charged for selling their goods? Or is it just, hey, come in and sell? You don't have to worry about anything.
So I'm going to let Amy answer that question, and then I'm going to tell you what what we need to do moving forward because I, you know, was not. You know, when I was here for the, I've been here for one jamboree as a volunteer, and I was the the trash guy who worked with. The the trash vendors. And I didn't do anything beyond that. So Amy, could you, could you answer that, how that relationship works?
Um, the the contract for food or the jamboree includes. Food trucks coming in and there is some share of revenue. And and I don't know the specifics off the top of my head, but. If it was something like the food vendor paid ten percent of their revenues as rent. To the jamboree, I think it was that kind of relationship. But I I would have to go back and look at the contract to to understand the details, but in general, I think it's a. There there's a sharing of revenues.
Is there an application for someone to fill out to be a food vendor?
So moving forward, there will be. So I want to talk a little bit of kind of be forward looking. Two things that we discussed after our meeting yesterday is. Is it, is it worth our while to charge food vendors? And I think that answer to that question is it depends. And then what application do we need to to have people fill out to make make this work? I, from our meeting that I had this morning with some of our folks, we we kind of are leaning towards not not charging food vendors rent for some of the. Events that we have. I I I don't control everything that happens at the jamboree. But to be a true partner in the community, I think it's important for us to invite those folks and see how the relationship works. Now, whether if they need water or or power, those are hard costs, and we need to figure out how to maybe pass along a little bit of that charge, but. I think we're trying to get out of the model of sharing revenue. And frankly, it's hard to tell, right? It's hard to know what ten percent is because. You know, when you have cash sales and credit card sales, it's just so hard to track. So. I I want, that's my kind of forward looking thoughts at this point. And I really want to firm that up with our local leaders of our local chambers and and visitors and convention and bureaus.
Okay, thank you. In order for for the citizens to come to the outdoor event over the September eleventh weekend. You're looking for twenty to thirty thousand, which is a significant number for our area. Is there going to be a charge for them to go through the gate?
There will be a modest charge for folks to go to go through the gate, and I don't have that, I don't have a firm number. I will tell you, it'll be less than forty dollars, but I don't have the exact final number yet. uh, because I don't know what the production costs of, uh, we're looking at a tribute band, um, and we're negotiating pricing with them, which will, will help us arrive at final ticket price. But we're trying to keep it as modest as possible. Uh, we also want to, you know, while I'm, just a little commercial word, we're trying, you know, as an opening act, we want to engage our local, uh, musical talent as well. So, that's the best I can tell you right now, to be very modest.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then while you're having this event at, uh, summit, of course, you're going to have your vendors trying to sell some items. Um, so, as they sell things, are you guys collecting the taxes on that or receiving some type of funds?
So, no, so, so the exhibitors will pay, uh, will pay X amount of dollars, uh, depending on, on how much space they want and whether or not they need electric and water. Uh, those are, we're, we're trying to put the finishing touches on, uh, that pricing today. It'll be different for folks, uh, it'll be different for local folks. It'll be different for small business. Uh, they're paying a lot smaller fee than a national organization would pay. Uh, and if people decide they want to sell items, uh, that revenue runs through them, not the summit, and we're not going to get a percentage of that. So, any sales taxes they would pay would be, uh, would be up to them. I think that from a, from a financial accounting and, and tax standpoint, that's the cleanest way to do it is, is if they're selling, uh, it's, it's their revenue, it's their, uh, tax liability.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Amy, I, I've got questions for you. I hope you don't mind. Um, looking at the gross revenue report that was sent in for February of 2021, I, I'm really, I'm really interested in the gross revenues listed down the left-hand side. Lodging and camp, campground facilities. Um, is that a liable one for the summit?
I don't have that form in front of me right now. Um, if I recall correctly, our revenue was all included in just one line.
Yes, it was all included for lease or agreements for use of property for meetings or events. So, what I would like to, I'm going to read these things to you and, and try to get my head wrapped around these. The first thing on there is for lodging and campground facilities. Uh, and I'm sorry you don't have a copy of this one in front of you. Um, the second one is retail store at facility. So, i- is that the store that Elson runs for you, or?
That, the retail that is, the, the retail that we are, um, required to pay the one point two five percent is the Ruby Welcome Center retail establishment that's out on Route nineteen. And that, that facility's been closed since March of 2020.
Okay, and then, so that's the only one point two five percent you pay is just at the Welcome Center? Not at the store on the facilities where you sell candy and, and drinks and?
Correct.
It's t-shirts. You don't pay any taxes on that?
We pay sales taxes on that, but that's not part of the one point two five.
Okay. All right. Um, then we have operations of gift shops leasing used by the general public for nonprofit. Wait, let me back up. Number three is operations of gift shops. So, you have gift shops throughout the property?
Uh, I think I misspoke, uh, the gift shop, the gift shop on that form. And, and I wish I had the form in front of me and the definitions of all of those things to speak more, uh, clearly about each individual line. I, I didn't come prepared to do that today.
Okay, well, undoubtedly you have some of these forms in your office, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay, could you grab those and give us a, an high-level thing of, of what is paid on and what is not paid on?
I'm, I'm not very close to my office, so I.
No, I meant afterwards, and you email it to our administrator so she can get it to us. You, you, you submit one of these every, every, uh, month?
Correct.
Every month, correct?
Correct.
So, what I want you to do is take one and break it down. No, we don't do lodging and campground facilities. Uh, yes, we do this one. Yes, we do this one. Um, and, you know, zip lines, canopy tours, sports activities, yes, yes, yes. Because we can figure out what they are. Just tell us what is actually you're paying taxes on and what you're not.
Um, I think I understand what you're saying. Why don't I, uh, I'll, uh, begin a conversation, and then we can, you can ask questions after I try to answer them. How's that?
Okay, that's fine. But if you could, uh, send an explanation to our administrator, she can get the information to us.
And who is that, please?
You want to give your information, Ruth?
I'll get it to Bill and Amy. I think I have their.
Wait there, it's going to be sent to someone.
To both, to both of you, to Bill and Amy.
It's coming to someone there.
Not just someone. Our Amy is sending it to you, Amy, and to you, Bill.
Um, yeah, two million dollars worth of conferences? I mean, that's, uh, pretty high. Other than the Marriott, are there any other hotels or plans for any more hotels to be built?
So, we have, uh, three, three, uh, lodging areas. Uh, we don't have hotels on our property. Three lodging areas. One is the Yamagata Lodge. Uh, that's what I think you're referring to as the Marriott. Um, and then we have, uh, two facilities that are, uh, essentially dorm rooms that our, uh, seasonal staff use, uh, while they're here on property, uh, during the summertime.
Okay, so the dorm rooms aren't used for conferences when there's non-activity going on through the summer?
So, no, um, I mean, they could be, but, uh, at this point, they have not been used. Those, uh, rooms are not very old. Uh, they're filled with the primary purpose of housing our jamboree staff, our seasonal staff. Uh, we might have had one or two folks, uh, from GNCC state, uh, in, uh, one of those, uh, areas because it's, uh, close in proximity to their, uh, to their race, uh, course.
Okay.
Those are used by, uh, anyone outside, uh, of, um, of scouting. We do pay one, the one point two percent special tax. And again, those are only rented to folks who rent a piece of the property that they're not open. Can't call up and make a reservation if you're passing through as a general public.
Well, I, I was a, a senior leader at one of the scout camps, and I know what some of those places look like, so they may not want to do that to begin with. Okay, um, Tom or Allison?
I did have one more question now that you mentioned that. You said, how many rooms does the lodge have?
Uh, which, which lodge?
Is it forty-one rooms?
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll give you a quick breakdown. There are thirty-six rooms in the, what I call dorm rooms, uh, thirty-six, uh, times two, uh, in, in, in dorm rooms, and forty-one rooms, uh, in the Yamagata Lodge.
Okay, so the lodge, but you, you just said that the people that stay in the lodge, i- it's not rented to anybody unless they lease the property. Is that, is that what you just said?
That's correct. For all three of those locations, the only way you can stay on, uh, one of the properties is you lease, uh, if you lease, um, part of the, uh, the other venues. So, conferences, uh, uh, meetings, uh, uh, the vast number of, of room nights that we had are scouting-related, whether that be, uh, our seasonal staff or our, uh, s- uh, full-time staff or, uh, folks, uh, for scouting university.
So, it comes in a package of a conference, if you're going to hold a conference. It comes in a package, so you, you know?
Correct.
Yeah. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't come with the, uh, moto race? Only conference?
That, those are, I think those rooms were comps, yes.
Yeah.
It's, that area of use of operation? Then they get to include all these things in it.
Okay, I, I just have a couple of questions. When I, when I was up there, there, you mentioned that there were scouts and their families who had stayed there who were skiing at Winter Place. Um, what, how, how would they have gotten those accommodations absent the ability to book publicly? It would, like, if I just came in and I booked zip lining or, and other things, then I could automatically, um, book a room, or how does that work?
Yeah, so you have to, you know, so, so there's two things, two ways to access a property as a, as an outside individual, non-scouting related. Uh, it is, um, you know, it, it's pure property rental and, and what type of services you need. Uh, if you're a member of the Boy Scouts of America, uh, you can book, uh, pieces of the property, uh, through other means. So, we, uh, do a little joint advertising with, uh, uh, with, uh, Winter Place Ski Resort. Um, and, uh, and then we get that out to scouting families. So, that does two things. Uh, it provides a service to, uh, our scouts and scouters, uh, and then it provides the folks, uh, coming, uh, from outside the immediate area to, uh, to stay here in, uh, in Fayette County and, uh, and then ski, um, at Winter Place. So, there's primarily, uh, marketed towards, uh, well, it, it's a hundred percent marketed towards scouting families outside of our area.
But out, outside of the scope of a scouting-sponsored event?
I think, no, I think.
The family, and it wasn't my whole troop that wanted to come. If my family, my child was a Boy Scout and my family wanted to ski at Winter Place, we could, this process would have to be my whole troop to do.
No, it's, so when, when, when Winter Place, uh, books scouting groups, they book scouting groups, not individual families. So, you, you know, we, we don't, we don't target individual families in the way that you're talking about. We target groups of folks because for us to house one person, uh, in one of our lodges and for Winter Place to advertise to one family or, or host one family, it doesn't, this, you know, it doesn't make financial sense. So, we market towards groups, uh, reach groups to come. So, a lot of our, a lot of our rentals, uh, whether they, uh, be for sky groups or not sky groups, uh, you know, have minimums. So, we're not, we're not looking at the ones and twos of the world. I hope that answers the question.
Kind, kind of. Um, I had another question about, um, property improvements. I, I noticed that you guys had just put in, or at least I, I learned when I was there that you had just put in those family camping tents. And you had told me yourself that you're working on a five million dollar deficit. So, I was wondering how, um, you guys are able to fund these property improvements while working at a deficit?
Yeah, so there's, there's a, there's, there's, those are provided by donors outside the normal operations. So, the five million dollar deficit, it's, it's probably more than that when we look at debt service and depreciation, but let's go with five million dollars. But we have donors that provide, uh, uh, gifts to make those things happen that don't impact our operations. Um, in, in a lot of those cases, those are deferred gifts. I'm not sure how we arrived at, at getting, uh, the money for those particular items, but, uh, those are pure gifts and not, uh, paid for by the operations of the summit.
And I have another question for Amy. Um, Amy, in, in, in your view and experience, what types of things fall under? And this kind of goes, and, and you can defer answering this until you answer us an email or whatever. But, um, John wanted a more specific, um, breakdown of the one point two five percent. But I would like to know in general what, what you believe falls under the one point two five percent special tax that, that is currently paid to the county and then sent to the state and then divvied up between four counties?
Well, in, in general, um, it, it's outlined in the legislation that, um, was passed by the state. And, um, as I've come to understand, that it's non-scouting revenues that are generated and the gift shop in the Ruby Welcome Center on Route nineteen. So, so that would be a brief answer of, so it's not, the one point two five percent is applicable on non-scouting revenues and the gift shop at, at Ruby Welcome Center?
With no, with no, um, specifics about what type of revenue it is?
I think, I'm going to jump in, the, red, the, the, so, the, the IRS has a very, um, good definition of unrelated business revenue, uh, that, that organizations such as the summit follows. And, and those revenues that don't have a direct correlation to the mission of the Boy Scouts of America fall under, uh, unrelated business revenue. And that's the definition that, that we use.
Okay, so, that, yeah, to, to clarify something, now, I make sure that I'm right where I understand this. If, if I rent, I, I, uh, I do a conference or I hold a moto event, the lodge can come with a package of, of, that I rent from you all, correct? For X amount of dollars.
It's.
Well, yeah, for X amount of dollars.
So, if you rent a piece of the property, you can choose to have lodging, uh, or not, and that, that will change the price, yes.
Okay, so, now, when they add the lodging, because it's in a, in a lease, are you, uh, are you supposed to pay taxes on that, or how, how does that work out? Because that's a package deal. It's a package deal, so that's why I'm asking. So, you can't pay, you can't, on lodging at the lodge, there's, you're not charging taxes because it's a package deal, correct?
So, now, let me, let me answer that question, that, and then Amy can, yeah, Amy can maybe clarify this. So, and I'm going to make up numbers. So, if you want to bring a conference here and you want to have a, a day conference, let's say that that is a thousand dollars plus food and beverage, right? Uh, if you want to stay all night, it might be two thousand dollars. So, on both of those cases, we would pay one point two five percent, uh, of the gross revenue, uh, to the state, uh, plus any, any sales tax that, uh, that we would, that, that would be, uh, applied to that, which it would be applied to that full amount. So, in essence, we're paying seven point two percent on that thousand or two thousand dollars. Uh, because of the guidance we got from the county, those rooms aren't broken down and, and, and we're not, uh, according to the guidance we have, not paying occupancy on that. So, that's, I, I, I think that answers the question. So, there are two different types of prices, with lodging and without lodging.
Yeah, so you, you, you don't have a definite figure. I mean, I could say that, uh, if I'm you all, if I'm renting this place, listen, I'm going to throw in lodging for a thousand dollars if you rent this place for seventy thousand dollars.
So, we, we could do that, um, or we could, we could say that, you know, each, if you want five rooms, it's this price, or one room, it's this price. So, we're, we're, we have room pricing in mind, but most folk, most folks get this as a package deal.
Okay. Okay, so on your checkout slip from the hotel, each individual room probably has the option to have some type of TV, and they may rent a movie. So, the hotel or the rooms would charge that particular person for that movie if they so much take it?
But so, you're, I don't want to interrupt, but you're giving us way too much credit that we have the, the ability to rent movies in our rooms. We do not have that ability.
Okay, so, how, how's, what's the, uh, what's the checkout slip look like?
How, how's, what's the, what's the checkout slip look like? Is it just the cost of the room? Let's say it's a hundred bucks? Or are there taxes on that too?
So if you're, if you're, for most of the rooms, it's a package deal that's, that's built towards the organization that rents the property. The individual doesn't receive a, a checkout slip because the individual hadn't paid. Okay. In the case that an individual would pay, it would have the room price plus the six percent sales tax. At this point, we don't pass along the 1.2% to the consumer. We just pay that ourselves.
The Winter Place, is it Winter Place that is renting out the property?
No, it, it is the individuals, it's individual scout troops that are running, renting the lodging or other pieces of the property.
So when you meant family, when you was talking to her about a, a, a family down there from Winter Place, there could have been fifty families within a scout group that was actually there. They come with a group, not just a family.
Correct. Yeah, so the, the better word is, is troops. So I like to get down to the family level because we're a family organization, but it is geared towards Cub Scout packs and Boy Scout troops and, and the other units, we call them that we have. So I don't market to, to individuals. I market to a scout leader that might have twenty-five or fifty kids, twenty-five or fifty families in, in their scout troop.
How does the pricing work out with Winter Place though, if you have a package together? So does the, I mean, how, how does that structure work?
So it's two separate packages. It's, it's the accommodations that we would provide and then Winter Place provides, I, I don't have their pricing because that's their business. But it, they, they give a, a steep discount towards folks that, that are involved in scouting. They, they do that as well for other organizations. They do a lot of businesses with church scouting units and, and, and other type of youth serving organizations. And I, I know it's at a deep discount towards what the general public pays, but it, we don't collect their fees. They don't collect our fees. It's just a, it's more of a joint awareness campaign than anything else.
So the scouting organization would pay both you and Winter Place for whatever its package is?
Separately, yes.
And I want, getting back to plans to engage the community, I was wondering about community discounts, whether you have plans to, to open some of your facilities to the, to the local public? And, and when you have these larger events, whether our local community members would be eligible for discount rates for entry?
So yeah, so that's a concept that's kind of unsettled right now. I, uh, when, when I got here, I said, you know, we need to pull, I, I call it the curtain and, you know, I want to pull back the curtain and let people know what happens here. Want them from local communities to be engaged with, with the summit. We're, we're, we have done a couple of events free to, or very, very low cost. I think, you know, maybe we sold food just to cover the cost of that. But we've done a couple of events in the past. I think the last one was twenty nineteen that was open to the public at no, no cost. We're planning on a couple of smaller events this year that the public would not be charged for, but they, there might be some things that they would have to pay for once they get here, such as food and, and drinks and things of that nature. But I, I, I have an, an idea that is not, you know, it's not necessarily ready to execute yet where we, we, we grant access to folks, but, but charge, you know, but have different tiers of pricing. And, and that's just in an idea phase right now. I, I, it's not ready to be executed at this point. What is ready to be executed for the public this year are, are a couple of events. One is a, a free drive-in movie that we're trying to pull off on June fifth. That'll be at the Ruby Welcome Center and the large parking lot we have there. Entry is, entry will be free, but we'll be selling, you know, food and beverage in some way, shape or form, whether we do that ourselves or with, with, uh, local vendors. And then we're looking at a, a smaller show in the facility I'm setting. And now that, that can seat about three hundred folks. Don't, that is kind of yet to be determined, but that, that, that we hope to be a October, a November event for, for the public.
Them bunk houses, I, I just have to, you say they're not very much to them. They're just, just a bunk house. Just, there's thirty-nine in one and how many in the other?
There's thirty-six in each one, and each room sleeps six people. So if you walk in one of those rooms, I, I call it a college dorm room, but I understand they're a lot nicer since, in the twenty years since I've graduated. But you walk in and, and let's say it's about fourteen, twelve by fourteen. There are three sets of bunk beds in each one and a small table. So it's.
Okay, so the dorms are different than the bunk houses, right?
No, there's. I said that the bunk houses are like a college dorm.
Okay.
Trying to draw, I was trying to draw a similarity between the two. So you walk in, it's a, it's a rectangular room, two sets of bunk beds, and then on each floor there are, I think, nine shower restroom facilities that are single use.
What, what, do you know what them bunk houses cost to build?
I do not know that.
And then the lodge has, the lodge has, it's just like regular, it, it has TVs in it, right? Lodge has TVs or not? Or is it just?
There, there are forty-one rooms with, lodging rooms with TVs in them, yes. I, there are probably eight, eight or nine channels there.
I, I, I think I've seen a picture and they look pretty nice. They're, they're pretty nice, aren't they?
Are they pretty nice? I, I, you know, I, I stayed in one while I was looking for a house. I, I was, I was fairly comfortable.
In, in the five million dollars if you're in deficit, you know, is that every year?
That's on a good year, yes. So we've, we've, in the beginning, it was a lot higher. We're trying to whittle that down. Our goal is to be at even by twenty twenty-four.
When you look at your financials and, and stuff like that, what is your biggest reason that you're at say five million dollar deficit?
So there, there's a lot of reasons, but I think I can point to a couple. It, it is is inventory and warehousing. So when you have a, a site that's ten thousand acres, that's built for forty to eighty thousand people, there's a lot of infrastructure to, number one, take care of. So the maintenance and facility cost utilities are, are the biggest costs that we have. And we're gonna have that, we're, we're gonna have those hard costs whether we're open or not. And, and I think that's the number one reason why, why we're at the point where we are. So we have a eighty thousand person venue and we have twenty-two thousand people coming here every year.
Well, I mean, you don't use the power unless you, unless it's being used, right?
Power, power makes up one, one part of that, yeah, but, but.
Right, your utilities. Well, what's the other part that, that, the major, major cost in utilities? If you're not using it, you're not charged for.
So it's, it's, well, number one is everyday maintenance. It is, you know, we, we, we can't shut the power down completely on every building that we have. But you know, we, I, we we have, we have three hundred, three hundred individual shower restroom facilities. We have more miles of zip line than I can imagine. You know, we have, I don't know how many buildings that are occupied, but we're using the buildings. It's, it, but we're not using them to their capacity. So we do have twenty thousand people visiting us every year, whether it's Scout Camp or Scouting University or things that we do for the local community, such as the United Way or hosting a, a business leader summit. But, but those things don't add up to enough to keep, to get us to a break even point.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of places, they categorize a certain area for a certain number of people. And then they open up another area if they're gonna be that many people. I'm just curious why it wasn't designed that way, maybe? Or operated on a larger scale. Either way, you, you can rearrange stuff to do that. And I was just curious.
I, I think it, you know, so number one, this place was designed to host the National Jamboree every, every four, three or four years here in, in Southern West Virginia. But it was also designed, and I, I understand, I wasn't around in the, in the local conversations. It was designed to be you know, part of the economic engine of, of this area. And we, we as the summit haven't realized that potential yet. So I think it would, the, 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 the design of it was that we would, instead of twenty thousand people, we would have two hundred thousand people every year. And, and I think if we get to that point, I hope everyone on this, this, this phone call is, is, is happy because those folks are gonna keep us all busy. You know, coming to the summit or eating a restaurant or shopping or going, you know, staying in a hotel. You know, if I, if I have, you know, twenty thousand people here, they're not all gonna, even non-scouters, they're not all gonna wanna stay here. So you know, there's, there's twenty-two hundred rooms out there that we're gonna be able to book.
What, see, what do you see? What, what do the summit see? And how to get to two hundred thousand? You gotta have some type of plan. We've been there since twenty thirteen. Is there a plan to get to two hundred thousand or, or is it just, we hope they're gonna come?
Well, so, so hope is not a strategy. I don't know who said that, but I'll say that today, right? So if we go back to the beginning of this conversation, it's, it's scouting plays a role in that. Our business partners in the community play that. Our conferences play a role in that. Our venue rentals play a role in that. And our events like the, the Fall Freedom Fest play a role on that. So cumulatively, in, in those four buckets, we're, we're, we have a plan to get to that point in the next three years is, is my goal. I would love to say in three years that, that, that's absolutely gonna happen. But, you know, in a non-jamboree year, like I said, we're at about twenty-two to twenty-five thousand, depending on the environment. Last year was a little bit lower. In, in a jamboree, jamboree year, we're at seventy to a hundred thousand people. So we're, we're, you know, in, in the jamboree year, we're fifty percent of the way to that, that particular goal. With the, with more venue rentals and more events like the Freedom Fest, I, I have no doubt we're good there.
I'd like to know whether you're open to working with us and, and of course our county CBB and Chamber of Commerce to come up with a, a plan, a, a comprehensive plan to engage and partner with our local businesses and also to and a, and a pricing scheme for our local residents for scouting services and events and things like that.
So, so absolutely. I hope I showed that, at least from the short conversation that we had a few weeks ago. I, I hope you get that feeling from me today. And I, and I know that folks from Adventures and Visit Southern West Virginia got that yesterday. My question to them is, how can the summit help you and how can you help the summit? And I think once we have a dialogue in our community with more people, I sent them a note last night saying, who else needs to sit around this table? Once we have that community of how we can help the community, how the community to help us, that's when we do really special things for Fayette County.
I feel like, I feel like those conversations need to take place in the community rather than up there because access is a pain and, and I, I think a lot of people are intimidated by it and it takes a lot of time to get in and out of the campus up there. I think we need to start having some conversations down here and I'm happy to work with you to set those up in our local, you know, our memorial building or wherever we can accommodate larger groups of people.
Yeah, so absolutely. Everywhere I've been, I've been engaged with the community in one way, shape or form, whether it's a small part at United Ways or Rotary or with state and, and county and city government. This, my tenure here has been a little different. Number one, we're in a COVID environment for the last part of the year and moving into this year. And number two, I, I really had to work with some of my, my colleagues here to get them in a different mindset. Now that I hope COVID is shrinking, that's my hope anyway. And I, and I, I feel better about where our staff is. You know, I, I, my next step is to be out in the community. So you guys let me know what role I can play, who I can bring along and what other folks we need to get engaged. Because I, I, you know, I, I know other people have said this and I will tell you again, I really care what happens in West Virginia outside the boundaries of the summit. I want this to be a place my kids are proud of. I want to look back and say, you know, I spent most of my life here. And I want it to be, I want it to be better than what it is today. And let's define what that better is and work towards it.
And one of the things that occurred to me too, when people are up there at the, at the summit, it, do you guys provide transportation to different places within the summit? Cause it is a huge campus. Get around.
So, so we do, we do provide, we engage, and I don't know the, the companies, but we engage with local busing companies. Some of those, we pay the schools to help with. So, you know, some revenue a little bit for the schools. And then for the summer, we, we're, we hire a number, and I don't know what the number is, of school bus drivers that otherwise wouldn't, you know, necessarily be driving a school bus in the summer to transport folks from one point to another.
Okay, so given that, that you have that in place, is it possible to try to factor in community trips during some of these summits and activities where you bus some people into the local towns and let them, you know, walk around and themselves at the businesses?
Yeah, that's a good point you bring up. I'm working with a group right now out of Michigan. And, and the number of folks they bring will be small. There, there are three hundred, forty exchange students that they, that I hope that they bring here in the middle of September. And we were talking about what cultural attractions there are in, in our local communities. So we, we're talking about doing just that with them. I just need to figure out what their budget for that is. But we're gonna test that model as early as this September. We've done that a little bit when we have jamborees. So hopefully everyone knows, part of being a jamboree participant is that you get on a bus and you go somewhere in, in Southern West Virginia. It's not always Fayette County to do community service. So I, I hope everybody knows that the forty thousand people who are here for a jamboree, they do get our property, but it's really for community service and not for, not for spending money. So both, both are important though.
Bill, I got, I, I, you know, I always seem to have another question after, after Ms. Taylor Johnson says something. But how, how is the CVB's, how are you gonna work with the CVB's or the CVB's gonna work with you? I noticed you've mentioned that a few times. And how, how was that going to? How you gonna work something out? Can you tell me the details of that?
So I think we're in the beginning stages of figuring out what each of us want for our organizations and what we can bring to the table. That, that's always step number one. The, the, you know, before that is, it's an open line of communication, which which I think we've had. I think we can be better. And that's why I'm trying to get every two week kind of touch point with some folks. And I really want to grow that beyond the handful of folks we already have. But the bottom line is, I don't know how we're gonna work together yet because we haven't defined what we want to accomplish. Step number one is defining what we want to accomplish beyond, beyond a very general vision of we want to make our communities better.
Okay, well, I'm just curious how the CVB, okay, so you're working, you're, you're talking about working with the CVB to market the other areas in the, in the summit? Is that what you're talking about doing? Marketing both?
That's exactly what I would like to do. So when people come to the summit, I want to tell them. That's exactly what I would like to do. So when people come to the summit, I want to tell them where they ought to go in the community. And I want the community of businesses to say, you ought to see the summit. I mean, in general, that's how things work. You know, if I would go to, uh, Orlando, you know, my, the guy who checks me out, or the girl who checks me at the hotel says, you know, we have a restaurant, but here are five other restaurants. This thing, but here are five other things. I mean, in, in simplistic terms, that's how, I think tourism works. Um, probably a little more complicated than that, but that's step one is, you know, we promote each other.
And I agree with that, Bill. Do you know how most of the CVB's and the communities around here and the lodging areas around here work with the CVB's to promote things? Do you have any idea?
I'm sorry, I, I, you can't.
Do you know how most of the areas that work with the CVB's? You know how the CVB's, um, get the revenue to work with the other businesses?
Yeah. Probably through the tax base and specifically occupancy tax.
Bam. So I'm, I'll be honest with you, Bill. You, you know, I don't mind us all working together. You know, I was one, but I'm gonna tell you, the CVB's are on here. I will have a real problem if, if something's worked with the summit without there being hotel motel tax or some kind of tax that, that everybody else is expected to pay in this county in order to be in a book or to be promoted. Uh, that, I will have a real problem with that. And so I'm just letting everybody know that right there. And I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be, uh, unass about it. But when we're talking about CVB's working with the summit, I don't have a problem. But when everybody else in this county, I'm gonna mention again, pays a tax to get in that book, to be promoted, to have business. And no, and somebody else doesn't, there's, that's a problem with me.
Conversely, though, I, I did wonder if the summit is advertising our CVB's on its website. I mean, I under, I get where you're coming from. I'm, and agree, but I, cause I, I think everybody knows, I've asked them questions about the hotel motel tax already up there. And I still think that was a liberal legal, um, interpretation. But, um, that aside, um, is that a possibility to advertise our CVB's or provide links to them on your website?
Yeah. So absolutely. Uh, I don't know if we do that now. I'm trying to visualize our website. We, uh, but we can do that. That's very easy for us to do. Uh, and I have no problem with that. I don't expect anything in return.
I think in the past too, we've had employees who have been, been involved with the boards of the CVB and the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not sure who that is today.
You do have somebody. I, I asked the question earlier. You do have somebody on our New River Board CVB board.
Isaac Culver?
No, it's, um.
Isaac, yeah. Isaac is on the chamber board, not the CVB, but on the Chamber of Commerce board. So yeah, he's on the chamber board, but not the CVB board.
I think Dave Kopsa used to be on the CVB board, but I'm not sure that we, if we have anyone on there now.
We should probably, I'll, I'll talk to the head of our CVB's about how we can engage you guys in, in those boards. I think that, I think that's an important connection to make sure that our, um, local businesses are being advertised up there and, and um, that down here, people know when people are coming. Cause I keep hearing the sad, sad tale of two thousand thirteen where everybody's business, including, um, one of our, our county employees who owned a local business. And everybody prepared for this huge influx and bought extra food and materials and things. And then nothing happened. Um, so not only did they not benefit, but it was to their detriment that, um, nobody came down. And I understand you guys have since remedied that issue, that people aren't restricted to campus like they were that year. But, um, those are the kinds of things that, you know, that kind of lore is what we're, um, working against here. You know, we, people down here see you guys as, you know, being this big thing up on high that is, has not delivered on the promises given to this community. And I wasn't here when all of this was negotiated or, I mean, in this position or even here in the county. I didn't return until two thousand thirteen. So it kind of was already in, in place when I got here, but I heard about it and then I never really saw anything. Yeah. And, and still, since I've been here, I haven't really seen a huge, um, increase in, in revenue by virtue. I had my nails done with some bus driver ladies during the last jamboree, but that, that's pretty much the most I've seen. Um, that, and I saw some people cycle through Bridge Brew Works a couple of years ago while I was there. But it, it's not, I mean, you guys are working against a, a, a big public perception problem despite what your numbers are telling you. And I feel like that's something that, you know, we need to make sure that the public down here, you know, to get the kind of cooperation and partnership we're talking about that will benefit both sides is that you need to make sure that they know, that they see, you know, what you're doing and that they, you know, that it's, it becomes that the, that the pattern changes where everybody says, yeah, you know, the Boy Scouts are really, you know, the fact that they're here is really helping us. We're glad they're here. Cause that's not the perception now. And it's unfortunate. And then, and then, and it may be, um, not, may not be fully informed. And it may not take everything into consideration that you guys think it should. But the fact is, that's the perception down here. And, um, and, you know, it's something, the fact that you're behind a gate, you know, a locked gate in a restricted area and all that other stuff makes it even worse because then people whisper and make things up about what might be going on up there. But the fact is, the majority of the businesses are not seeing the, the benefit. And I feel like there are some very simple solutions like busing people off the property for community visits and things like that, where you do a little time in Oak Hill, a little time Fayetteville, and then the little communities here to the businesses. That, that would be one way of, you know, of changing that and, and helping, you know, even, even if, and, and I do, you know, when you tell me, Bill, that you guys, you know, wanna do right and pay the taxes that we think are owed. Even if that's true, say, say you're right. Say that what I think is a liberal legal interpretation is correct. Um, there are other ways that you can find a way to overcome that and still bring business down into this community that you receive up there. And I think that's what I'd like you to think about how to do.
So, so that is exactly what we're thinking about. I, I, I wanna, if, if, I, I don't know how long, uh, you guys need me. Uh, I'll make myself available, but I, I do have some folks, uh, that, uh, I'm paying to be here. They work by the hour. So, uh, but I, I do want to say that, you know, I came here in two thousand thirteen as a native of West Virginia, but I was, uh, living in, I think, uh, Pennsylvania at the time. And I was bummed out that I couldn't leave and, uh, during the jamboree. We had, we do remedy that. Uh, we want to advertise to our scouting groups. Uh, we've put some stuff together, but I, you know, in a small way, I visualize working with, uh, our local chambers and visitors, uh, bureaus to, you know, have a, a display this summer. A brochure display like you see anywhere else you go to, whether it's a hotel or a rest stop or what have you. So we can promote local businesses. So that's a small way to get started. Uh, the other way to get started is, is us to engage, uh, folks, uh, in, in our bigger events. Spartan is a little bit difficult, uh, just because they, um, you know, they're, they're a renter and not a, the summit is just a, a land, uh, a landlord for them. But when it comes to us doing our own events as the Fall Fest, that's an easy way for us to engage the local community. And frankly, put our money where our mouth is. So, uh, I'm, I'm really excited about this week. We're trying to button that all up. So we can get that out to the community. And you can see that whatever we said in the past, I, I'm sorry, it didn't happen. But what I'm saying today and what I've said since I've been here, uh, it will happen. Uh, but I know I have to show you that before you believe me. Uh, but look for that very, very soon. You know, talk to Lisa Strater about our conversation yesterday. As we engage others, you hear from them. Uh, I mean, I mean business when I say I want to help. Uh, and, and by virtue of me saying, I mean business, the summit does too. So, uh, with that, I, I will stay here if you want me, but I just want to inform the committee, I do have some folks waiting for me. So, I, I'll let you dictate that and, and, uh, see where we go from here.
I just got one more little thing and I'll let you go. And I understand you're busy. Uh, you know, besides all this other stuff, last year I come to the summit. Is Todd McGregor still there?
So Todd McGregor is here through the end of this week and he has accepted a new job in Pittsburgh, um, uh, starting May first.
Yeah. I come to, me and Gabe Pinte, oh, Gabe, I'll call him Gabe. Pena, come to the summit to talk to two gentlemen, one of them being Todd. And I, I requested the summit and the county to work together on a recreational development plan and maybe co-op uh, with, uh, the county. And, uh, even if it's some of the, uh, scouting labor, you know, uh, for some in-kind work for us to put a project together, that was March of last year. More or less, they said no. More or less, they said they weren't gonna work with us. And even though, and we're not talking about taxes right now, but I'm gonna mention the taxes. I said, you know, these guys are not paying taxes. They were talking about community service, community work and work with the community. I'm gonna go to them and I'm gonna talk to them about us putting a recreational plan for all four corners of the county. To get to help all four corners of the county. And maybe a little bit of cabbage put in, like a little bit of, uh, in-kind work. Because I know y'all do that. It's been a year. I haven't heard nothing. More or less, they told us no. I guess that's the last thing I've got to say. And I know you've got to go and I appreciate you being here, Bill.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I value the conversation. Uh, I'm not sure, um, you know, I can understand the concept. Uh, I assume cabbage means dollars. That might be hard for me to come up with right now. But, uh, but let's, let's.
In-kind labor. Uh, uh, we even talked about in-kind labor.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's talk about that. So, um, I'm not sure how business is conducted and, and if I can meet with folks individually or not. Uh, but I'll let you, uh, tell me, uh, I want to hear more about that because that, that was a new statement for me, something that on my radar, but I want to put it there and see what we can do to help. Uh, I might, so right now I'm saying maybe. Uh, you rarely hear me say no. What you might hear me say is something that, that sounds like a great idea. Here's the scale we can do now. And here's the scale we can grow into. So let's continue that conversation.
Does anybody have comments from the?
No, just to share. If there's anybody that comments, I'd like to hear it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, are there any questions from the public then?
You want to ask the public, John, if there's comments in here? Everybody out in Zoom land, do you guys have any questions? Remember you have a limited amount of time to talk because Bill's very busy. But if you would like to say something, please raise your hand and Amy will get your name to me.
I'm not leaving. I'm just gonna adjust my screen.
Okay. Uh, our assessor would like to, uh, make a question. Come on up. Eddie, so they can see you.
Okay. Um, I've been around since this thing began. Uh, and I've sat in all the meetings that they had at the National Park Service and Senate of the Mansion and all the, you know, a lot of local business there. And, uh, the main, the main topic that they, they were talking about is competing with local business. That wouldn't happen. But yet we had to have a constitutional amendment. And a constitutional amendment. I don't even know why we had that, but, you know, the state voted on a constitutional amendment. But are we competing with local business? You spoke of, of, uh, that it's not a hotel there. It's a, it's a lodge. Okay. Well, if Winter Place has these groups coming in, they're gonna come, I think, anyway. They're gonna find a place to stay. So are, is it, are, are you competing with local business? That's my question. Because, you know, there are right now probably a hundred and fifty Airbnb's in Fayette County. So, I mean, my question, and I don't mean to be hard, but that's, you know, that's some of the concerns that I've heard over the years. I've been around, I've been working in this county for thirty-two years now.
So, I don't know if I can answer that question. I, I'll answer it, but really that question needs to be answered by other businesses. Are we competing with local businesses? Uh, I, I, number one, I don't think so because I think our product is different. Uh, when a scout crew comes here to go to Winter Place and that we'll use that as an example because that's what you mentioned. They're also doing scouting stuff here. They couldn't do scouting stuff at XYZ Lodge necessarily. Uh, so we're, I, I think our product in that respect, uh, is unique. Uh, it is not our intention to compete with other folks. When I, when, when we sat down in, in the limited amount of time I've been here, when I sat down with a potential partner, the, the question is what do you do well and what do we do well? And what do we do similar? Uh, meaning, you know, I'm not gonna get into the rafting business and that's an easy one because Fayette County is, is, you know, that's, that's a lot of tourism for our community. The summit's not gonna be a rafting outfitter. Like, we have a license. It's not what we're good at doing and we're not gonna sell that. Uh, that particular product, maybe beyond a small float trip. Uh, so, so we're not trying to compete. We're trying to complement. And, and, and I think, uh, the more, uh, folks know that, the more I, I think there'd be uh, aware that we're trying to help and, and not take business away. That's, that's how I can answer that question, but really I don't know how other businesses feel. I, I know how some of our partners feel. And I believe they feel that we're, we're complimenting what they're doing and adding to what they're able to do and, and getting people to stay another day, uh, at, at their lodge because they can shoot here. I, that helps them. That helps us. That's what we're trying to do.
I know you said you weren't gonna target, um, weddings anymore, but were you finished, Eddie?
Yes.
But, but you not think the weddings compete with our local wedding venues down here?
So, so we have, number one, we've, we've, the only advertising for weddings we have has been word of mouth and people posting on their own website, their own social media. And, uh, we have, uh, we booked, uh, two weddings at a very, very low cost. Uh, we're, we're really at the point now trying to figure out if that's something that we want to do moving forward. Nothing against people in the wedding industry or nothing against brides and grooms. Uh, but it, I, I think I've learned that as a business, we don't necessarily want to get into. Uh, we wanted to test the market. Uh, if we would, you know, we, we view ourselves, if we decide to move forward in weddings to, uh, promote to folks totally outside the, uh, the boundaries of, of the region. Uh, and, and maybe move towards a destination wedding rather than a venue, venue only wedding. That is, if we decide that that business is something that we want to go through. And we have yet to decide that. So, you know, we, I think our product is different. Uh, you know, there, you know, I got married in a church on the corner of, you know, downtown Beckley. I can't remember the name of the church. And I, I, I didn't imagine that, that, you know, I would, I would get married at, uh, Adventures on the Gorge or the Barn on Unity or, or the summit. That wasn't on my radar. Uh, I think there are places, there's a space for everyone to compete. And I think the customers that we would choose to, to look at are not the same customers that other people might target. But, but, but again, I don't know if we're gonna move forward with that or not.
Okay. Uh, you know, since Eddie spoke on that, the tax thing, he said, if, if it wasn't, what, what, what is your, uh, interpretation or reasoning you? Okay, you know, since Eddie spoke on that, the tax thing, he said, if, if it wasn't, what, what, what is your interpretation or reasoning you think that the, that it was tax exempt? Is it something special for certain groups? Is it, what reason do you think it is?
So I, I don't, I can't, I, you know, I, I can't answer the question other than nonprofits are exempt from certain taxes. And I wasn't here when, when that happened. I, I don't know the background, don't know the details. And for me to, you know, give you the opinion, I think is unfair, would be unfair.
Say it one more time, I couldn't, you broke up.
I said, I said nonprofits are exempt, all nonprofits, whether they be a hospital or the Boy Scouts of America, are exempt from certain taxes. And for me to answer that question, it would be, you know, pure speculation of why that amendment was having, happened, because I was not here, not involved with it.
Okay, Lisa, with Southern West Virginia visitors, you're a?
Southern West Virginia.
What?
Let's visit Southern West Virginia.
Oh, visit Southern West Virginia?
Yeah.
Hi, I just wanted to, a couple of things, as we've been going through. One, I will tell you, our CBB, Fayetteville CBB and the New York Board CBB are all linked on the Bechtel Summit website. I think it's kind of been that way since the beginning, because that, having people find information about our region. And they have always been willing to have us out there when they've had events and jamboree for us to have access to their visitors. We did have a meeting yesterday with Adventures on the Gorge and they were discussing the Fall Festival. And it was suggested that they work out packages and utilize our local lodging facilities. I know that Bill knows and you guys as the commission know, I do feel they should pay hotel motel tax. And I think that does need to be clarified on the county level. And to what, to, and to what structures would deem for that? I mean, there's a lot of people who do rent, they may take up a whole facility for their event, but they still pay the hotel motel tax. So I, I don't really understand that exemption there, but I do feel like the, the, they're willing to work on that and if they're told, if they figure out the clarification on paying it, I don't feel like that will be an issue. And as far as the CBB's promoting.
Slow down for a second, Lisa, if you can hear.
It's weather.
The only sponsor Spartan, one of the caveats that we had from the beginning was they couldn't lodge out there, because we couldn't obviously invest hotel motel tax and bring all these people in and not see them in our hotels and motels. So that was not a problem, and that's how we've done that. This will actually be the fourth year, if everything goes, and that is a big event. It does fill up hotel rooms from Nicholas County to Mercer County. So it covers, really, it fills up the rooms in our whole region. And we hope to see more of those types of events being brought to the summit, because those do have a very big impact. So I guess that's all I wanted to clarify, kind of, and, you know, as far as the promotion of the fall event, we did discuss that as well, that they would, you know, need to be working with our local lodging people, putting people in our lodging facilities. And, you know, hopefully by that point, we'll have clarification on the hotel motel tax to see what we can do to facilitate these type of events.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Jenna Grayson?
Hi, everyone, thank you. I'm, I'm hearing about these education resources and volunteer resources that the summit has available. And I'm curious, how does the summit support education for local students and teachers?
So, so one of the big ways we, we have done that are field trips. We're working with Fayette County schools right now. Don't have the details worked out for a trip here in, in September. Mostly those trips are geared towards sustainability and environmental, environmental sciences. The other way, and this is more of a global West Virginia thing, we partner with West Virginia University to bring in a few thousand students. I don't know off the top of my head the exact number that that's going to shake out to this fall to, to go through a joint WVU Summit Science, Technology, Engineering and Math STEM Camp. So those are the two things that I know that we're doing. I'm sure we've done other things throughout the years, but those are the two projects we're working on right now.
And are those resources provided at cost or is there profit made on those resources?
So, no, there's, so not with, yeah, I'm going to be careful. You know, profit, there's really not a lot of, there's not profit involved with either one of those. In, in, in most cases, we're barely covering our costs for those particular activities. Our overhead alone for us, a person that come here per day is about $140. That doesn't count food or a tent or consumables and things of that nature, and our pricing is just above that number.
Is there any provision for, for the, for the summit to, to donate to causes like that? I mean, I don't know how a nonprofit like that works, but I'm just wondering. I mean, I know that you, you're running, you know, you, you're running a business to some extent too, but, you know, do you have, do you provide for a certain amount of charitable compensation for community-based or, you know, community education-based activities?
So in some cases, we, we do in-kind services. In some cases, in very, very limited cases, we make, we will give a gift of cash. We, we have given excess inventory to folks with clothing drives and things of that nature. But most of our services are in-kind. You know, you might, we might charge somebody cost for an event because they're a nonprofit. So we have different pricing. If you're a for-profit organization, we charge you more dollars than we charge you for a nonprofit. In some cases, we, we don't charge at all. So it's, it's, we, we try to make that happen, but it's very hard to go back to a board and say, yeah, there were 80,000 people here this year, but they're all free and our, our deficit is now $10 million. So there's a fine line that we try to walk there.
Okay, the last thing that, that we'll have. The last thing that we'll have is that our local sheriff departments were cut out of the move-in day or the day that all, all the buses arrived. And it was all given to the State Police Department. However, when they found out the State Police Department couldn't handle it, our sheriff departments, local, both local, were called. And they didn't have people that they set up for that. Our roads were ridiculous, especially on 19, and backed up by a tremendous amount. So he wanted to make sure that, that if you need their help from two local sheriff's departments, you need to let them know ahead of time. And of course, they want to be compensated, just like the state police were, but not probably that amount that you gave them. So just something from our local sheriff.
No, so I appreciate the comments. I can't speak to the roads at all, but I can speak to the fact that since I've been here, we've, we've hired, for the one event, one event we've had, we've hired the local sheriff to supplement the security that we had. Don't, don't know what kind of payment arrangements, I know there was a bill, but I'm happy to do that. So again, what happened in the past, I can't fix, but moving forward, we, we can do better.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. Oh, and Jenna wants to speak again, sorry Jenna.
Thank you, sorry, I accidentally muted myself and then couldn't unmute myself. Yeah, I just was wondering, I mean, as a local educator, I would love to see opportunities where we have, like, resources available. And so I think much out the same way that Allison was saying, how are we going to get local people into the summit? I would love to see a menu of options available for educators or, you know, local people, that we have a general idea of what it would cost to bring classrooms there and, and how that does differ from regular pricing. Because up until now, it's just kind of been, if you're, if you're not in, you're not in. And so if that is an opportunity, it would be great for the schools to have that as a resource in case they would like to bring students and so that we could bring some of our programs there.
So, yeah, we can easily do that, both from, from, you know, getting, so, so when we talk about education, we, we always think about the academic part of education, but there's a lot of value in the adventure part of education that, that can't be delivered in the school setting. So, you know, are you the one that I would engage Jenna to, to really start that conversation?
I'm not sure I am, but I can definitely connect you with people who are.
That would be great. So is it okay, is it okay with the commission if I give out my email address to Jenna? I don't want to be like, you know, those guys that go on TV and plug their book. But my email is bill, B-I-L-L dot Garrett, G-A-R-R-E-T-T at scouting.org. Anyone on the call, feel free to reach out to me and let me know what I can do to help you. Or if you have any questions, or frankly, if you want to give a tour, because I would rather give tours all day than sit in my office. So the gate is always open for you. If you let me know you're coming, I'll be happy to entertain you for a few hours and, and show you the magic that we can have here together.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Can we get a copy of one of these? All right, Bill, thank you very much. Eddie, thank you, and looking forward to working with you more. Any last thoughts from you guys? I know, Bill, we've held you up probably long enough. Amy, she's probably ready to say, hey, it's lunchtime.
No, so I appreciate the dialogue. And, you know, there's, there's about 10 million other things running through my head of what we can do for the community, but I don't want to, I don't want to make this a four-hour meeting. So let's, let's continue this dialogue, either, you know, formally, like we've done today, or informally, like what I did yesterday. Let's, let's continue talking about what we can do together. And, and I'm, I'm happy to help.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Bill.
Hi.
Okay. Oh, yes, it's for me and Patty, Jim, I have two. Yeah, I know, that's why I went to Exhibit A, I'm sorry. Okay. Yes, we can, take a small break. Who's the timing, how much they pay?
Well, you know why we're getting by with all this crap?
And, yeah, and that's money that's self-reported. I like the self-report, the R and L, because you guys give me a good fee. I'm not saying they're doing that, but they're good. Well, I'm going to tell you. Right, what I'm saying, I'm not saying they are.
I knew the counselor was going to say something.
Well, yeah, I'm saying that there are a lot of things going on up there that we don't see, and it's self-reported, and anybody, I think.
Surely, I mean, surely as a nonprofit, they have to be. No, Feds. Yes, we had John print it a copy of it. It doesn't say hotel motel. It says property taxes.
Well, I think that we could get several nonprofits who are paying taxes to go along with us to try to get this thing overturned. Okay, look at this. Each, the commission, the association, the prosecutor, all have associations. We're going to Wheeling next month. We pay hotel motel taxes. They collect that money. And that, I don't know why.
What, what did you just say?
Like our association, the prosecutor, commissioners and all that, we have an annual.
And you go to state parks and stuff.
And we go.
Land O'Hasset. Yeah, that's probably the only time they collect it, make sure that they send it, if they got all the officials, no, it is. No, I'm just saying that.
That thing, that, that constitutional amendment needs to be revisited. And I applied to the legal division of the State Tax Department last year for a taxability ruling, but it was over the weddings and some other things that they're doing up there. And he said, well, were they doing that July 1st of 2020? And I don't think so. Well, let's wait for next year.
Well, they've had at least two up there this year. I, I mean.
You want, I want that place to succeed, I really do, I, I think it should, but. Right, everybody wants, everybody needs, it's like the Airbnb's, you know, that, that thing came up, like, the hotels and river cafes and all, we're like, okay, you know, it's fine, we just want to be on the same. They had the hotel motel tax, they should pay the hotel motel tax. I mean, can't, can't argue that, and I think it should be the same with those guys.
You know, Ruth, you said that in this, we got to put a letter together, is that correct? What I want to send was a letter, it's every one of these forms. Every one of these forms for the past ever how long? Yeah, and so they, this is a joke, just what you were saying. This is a joke. The amount of taxes that they pay, it can't be right.
That's what they, that's what they pay the county, but we don't have numbers. Well, I know, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is, what we don't have is the numbers on what the businesses are getting or losing. And that's something I'd hoped for greater business, community participation. I mean, if, if, if the spirit is indeed to cooperate and to pay proper taxes moving forward, then great. We do have some past issues we need to resolve as well.
Well, I thought, yeah, I agree with you, but.
But we do need to get some more information, and I think that would be a great thing to do on one of our, at the end of one of our meetings, hold another one of our conferences.
But how do we get the information if there's not, there's not supply?
I think what we need to do is put, do, put a little questionnaire together, like, right away, and so Becky can email it out to the business owners and gather the data that way, because she already invited them to this and they didn't participate, probably a lot of them, because they have small businesses. Couple hours timeout, but, but they might take the time to fill it out anyway, just so we can get some data.
But, yeah, it's not what they, but it was a special bill, I believe.
The code provision is, is the.
It's on here.
It was a constitutional.
I think that's what all these are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all the codes. That constitutional amendment was, was the, was the hotel motel tax.
It's property tax, that's all it says.
Yeah, but how they're getting by with the hotel motel tax.
This is everything they have listed.
They're getting by with all this stuff by doing it in a package or a percentage or, and stuff like that, and that way they're not reporting.
Well, and that was their, the legal guidance they got. And so I feel like if that's the legal guidance they got, that that's, we need to challenge it on a legal basis. You know what I mean?
No, I, I agree, I mean, but that's how they're getting by with it.
Are there, aren't there other, we've got facilities like this? Are there, aren't there other, we scout facilities like this in, in our country?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Hillmont, San Antonio, New Mexico.
Yeah.
Yeah, but how they've been, how the practice has been. Of course, our, you can have my copy.
Can you get him a copy of this?
I'll get, he can have my copy.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it, Andy. I appreciate Kevin saying, you know, speaking your mind, saying what you need to say. I appreciate it.
Well, again.
But they're using it, the way they do it in the package, I think they, they're trying to, that's how, like she said, legal. She said, this is what you can do and get by with.
And they can charge camping fees on the C C. There's $20, that's $20.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
It's on the website. It's $40,000 to get.
Yeah, but he said they didn't, they didn't charge it. I mean, so. You need to make copies all that on their site.
Well, yeah, I mean, and that's the, that was his point when I was talking to him. That's what he said. It's a pass-through tax is what they were calling it. I mean, I, I really think, you know, if we were able to successfully challenge that legal advice or work it out with them, that, that's all it would take. I don't think there's a resistance, because for them, it is a pass-through tax, as far as the hotel no tax is concerned. However, they're selling it. Yeah, and, and again, like he said, it wasn't something that is going to really come out of their bottom line at all, if they charge it. It's, that's part of the legal opinion they were given, and then I want to get this email. Do what? I don't, but I probably should. I mean, my sales tax is calculated in there, and then I have, like, cleaning fees and things like that, but, yeah, no, I, I pay it out of my pocket.
It should be a total expense. For if you buy a bottle of water, you charge them. Get your bills done while you're out.
Hey, Michelle. But I do still pay it, yes.
Does the city of Oak Hill condone people going out and putting up all these spoxing signs on all the telephone poles? Are they pulling them off?
Some might tell them, though. Another one's in county, yeah. Somebody put them up all around Lewis House a couple months ago.
Yeah, because I had a, I had three. Spoxing clinic.
I, I would be afraid to call the number, but that's why it's just a sign that says spox own, and then they had the number. Clinic in Pennsylvania, we always hear. Okay, can we get to exhibit A?
Yeah, one of them was down there on your telephone pole.
Can we get to exhibit A?
Yeah.
She wants, she wants to go to this, John.
Okay, all right, number one.
So this is just for you to sign the proposal from Tri-State for the additional, um, masonry repairs. It's already been, the expense has been approved, but you need to approve.
Sign the contract. Should we approve this and put it on the minutes?
Didn't we already approve it?
We already approved it.
Oh, so it's already been pre-approved?
Yeah.
Is Kevin on that?
On the phone?
Yeah.
He's probably still got the credit.
Wait a second. Exactly how you said, look at this.
Amy, is this, yeah. And the commission doesn't pay anything. This is the towers in the valley.
This is the one for Smithers and Montgomery.
So we can get a letter together for this, this meeting?
Yeah, I think it needs to be for the. What is that thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, realistically, I think it's, I don't see a general answer. And like, it would be, because I think there needs to be a study, because I feel like there's no way they're not.
How are we gonna make it stand apart?
Well, I think the state should be.
Oh, you mean after this on the rabbit? Okay. I want to see some points.
Yeah, and I think all of it.
Okay, Walker's online now. Can you unmute Kevin, please?
Unmuted.
Okay, number two.
So Kevin, this is the discussion of your tower access assistance fund grant agreement.
Okay.
Anthony said that he had reviewed it, and he didn't see anything problematic, and it, there's no financial match required from us. And this is to go toward, um, towers where in the valley, Kevin?
Uh, ma'am, this is for a brand-new tower to be built in the Harwood location, which is the current location of our old tower site.
In Harwood?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's just on this side of Smithers, so.
That's one, that's the one that will backfeed into what we call the bowl area in Montgomery. It will connect the Golly Siren Tower to the Malden Sire, Siren Tower.
Will it benefit of anywhere across, well, you said Montgomery, anywhere across the river from Harwood, like Mount Carbon or, um, near the hollers over there?
It will benefit, but we still have since that dead zone over there, and we're looking at a coal company area over there, too.
That's what they're called.
I was, I was giggling, and I looked up at Anthony, started laughing harder.
I, I understood what she meant.
We don't say hollow. Do you? No, you don't. Okay, well, I, I move that we, um, so you're asking that we approve an application for the grant?
Uh, no, ma'am, the application was already approved and submitted back in, uh, late November, early December. Uh, the P S C approved the funding for that. I just need the commission to approve and accept us to receive that funding.
So accept receipt of the funding. Who's going to manage the grant?
Uh, the grant will be managed through us.
Through your office?
Yes, ma'am, through my office.
All right, I move that we accept, um, receipt of $638,090.50 grant from, um, the Public Service Commission for the tower in the valley.
One second. Okay, we've got a motion, the second, for the new tower going into the valley. All those in favor? Okay, it's passed.
We will, um, get with the contractors, and I will get a timeline of everything, and I will submit the timeline for you guys to, uh, be kept abreast on the moving forward and everything.
Okay, and hold on here. We've got another one for you.
Okay.
So the next one is, um, discussion and decision to approve a new 911 dispatch file, annual salary 22 of 6880.
What's the person's name, Kevin?
Uh, Bethany Stewart.
And, um, to be clear, this, um, position was advertised as this individual was selected out of a prior advertisement, set of applicants that went out within the past 30 to 60 days. It's, it's a very recent posting, and this was one of the applicants to that posting, which is why it wasn't reposted. Um, and she was interviewed and vetted by, um, our H R officer and the, and the leadership over at the 911 Center, and determined to be, um, the next best candidate. And her, um, salary is being justified due to her need to, uh, complete certain training. And she will also have a six-month probationary period as our new hires do have. So I, I go ahead and, um, move that we approve this, this hire.
One second. Okay, we have a, a motion and a second to approve a new employee, uh, for 911. All those in favor?
Now, I want to, just along these lines, everybody, um, we've been doing this, but you know, all the other elected officials do their own hires, right? And we have a chief of H R, and we have a county administrator, and we don't really bring these people in ourselves and interview them, you know? My suggestion is for the process, because especially in a position like this 911 hire, where they have an immediate need to fill, need to get somebody in there, um, I recommend that we empower, um, Ruth to, um, to authorize these hires. And she could email us when they identify a candidate, just to make sure there's no problem with that candidate. But I don't know why everyone has to come before the commission, because, you know, we, we have a chief of, you know, administrative, we have administrative chief here, and we have an H R chief. So we rely on their judgment for our, you know, county employees. So I think it would be more efficient, I'm saying.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Because then if we have an objection to the hire, we can let her know and let her know why, and then they can come up with another candidate, but, um.
I, I don't have a problem at all with that.
Because otherwise, okay. I mean, does that sound okay? Or do you have any concerns about that, Anthony? Okay, okay.
Kevin, how many more people are you short in the call center? Kevin?
Yes, sir.
How many more people are you short in the call center?
Sir, as nothing goes wrong, this should bring me full staff. However, I do have one out on family medical leave right now, and we will not know the outcome of that until his doctor either sends us documentation on what's going to happen or not. But at this time, that would bring us to full staff minus the F M L A employee.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, number four.
So this is, um, this is our recertification for community rating system to the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for Flooding Insurance Rates.
Yeah.
Um, and basically, we just recertify every year. I mean, there's no change or anything.
No.
I just need a motion and a.
I move, we recertify.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, the second. All those in favor? This is just for the regular certification that we do every year.
Okay, and I, and I also think we should forego discussing future agenda items, because we did that already for May 7th, and I feel like we can do it. You got one?
I've got one.
Oh, man.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And the only reason, the only reason I think we ought to discuss it is it, is, is it's, uh, it's time-sensitive? Ruth, did they get a copy of that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did you, did you read it? About what?
Are we just going to add that then?
Well, I think it, I, I think it not only has to be, it can't be added, I think it has to be something done before the 30th.
Tell her why you think it needs to be the 30th.
You got, you, you got three months. You have to have a, a letter sent prior to three months.
Right.
From what I understand. I mean, there's another way around it all, but still, I'd like to try to get something.
Well, why don't we put it, put it on the.
Is that it? I think, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I think, yeah, he needs.
Okay.
I read it this morning.
I feel like that should be an agenda item, and we should go into executive session to discuss it.
Can we do a special?
You want to do a special meeting on it before then?
I mean, I'm just saying, we'll see what Anthony says, because reading the whole thing, there's other ways out of it, but still.
Like basically, yeah, you have three months notice, and he wants to do that.
Sooner than later.
Yeah, if you wait, yeah.
Well, no, the way I read it, we can give three months' notice at any time. It, it doesn't have to be before the expiration.
Right.
Is that what you were concerned about?
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I'm not a lawyer. You're a lawyer.
Three months prior. Yeah, no, but then read, read on.
If you read the bottom, it says.
Then he goes on to say that, that he, he still thinks three months from any date is, will fly.
Well, he says that, then he says if they even object the way it was wrote up.
He don't, he doesn't think there's any room for.
Right.
A more liberal interpretation of it.
Still, I guess I, I'm always trying to be cautious. No, I mean, I, I mean, I, you're, you're the lawyer. I just. I mean, I don't think, I think we can do it no matter what, especially the last paragraph, or keep that sentence or two, but still. Oh, I agree.
Well, it's like we're not sending it through lawyers or something. I mean, I don't even know how to get into some of this stuff. And the MOUs and all that stuff. Well, I feel like what we need to do is. On anything, I guess, yeah. Well, I, I think we should go ahead and authorize him to write that letter for us. And, um, and then we can put an agenda item on to vote on it, or, I mean, he could.
They don't, we can wait then. So you, we, it doesn't have to be, I mean, we can wait to three months, it within, within. Okay, I see that. I just, sometimes I'm just cautious.
Yeah, we missed, we missed any deadline we would have had.
No, it's still, we're still within three months, if we had. I thought it said July 1st.
It does, but we'd have to do it by April 1st.
My gosh, I've got my months missed, because I'm, my gosh. Okay, okay.
So.
Okay, we'll pass the three months. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Showing your calendar for next year.
Yeah. Mark, mark. Well, the last paragraph or something, he says it doesn't matter, even if they took, even if they object to it or whatever, they, it doesn't matter, the way it was wrote.
To, uh, March the 1st of next year.
Or we can even do it in February. That way, we give them a little bit longer time.
We could do it today. I mean, I mean, give the notice anytime, when it's effective, it's what's, would be argued, so.
Is it? Well, you might have put it on there, Ruth.
The 21st, the second meeting in May.
Either the 7th, because, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the. On the 7th. On the seventh, okay, good.
We couldn't, yeah. Yeah, so it's already over, so. I was trying to get out of my trip. I'm just kidding.
Gatlinburg.
Yeah, I'm just kidding.
Okay, so we don't need to discuss any other future agenda items.
I'll let it go to the, let them all go to the seven.
Anthony, have you had time to look at the ambulance agreement?
Yes.
Okay. I'm glad you have.
We discussed that, yeah, already, right?
I don't understand why.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, the two takeaways for me is, it seems to require a presence in January. Anybody else should draw, any other company should draw in, but, I mean, I don't see how we can, that is.
Okay.
I mean, as a practical matter, I have a hard time believing that if we pull the plug on that agreement, that.
No, because there are any other candidates, too, you're right, they won't.
They, they make money here.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're based in this area, but it, it would seem to me that. This is my opinion, but it seems to me the closest available unit should be the one.
Right.
Responding.
Responding for transport.
The closest available janitor.
Yeah.
And the other thing, if the county commissions were to show favoritism towards, excuse me, showing preference for janitor, I'm just a janitor, I guess.
Yeah.
I can tell you from my personal experience, it's, every time they show up, there's a bill generated, every time they haul somebody to the hospital, there's a bill generated. I'm not, I, I don't see how they account for that.
Now, I'm gonna tell you something else, if you check with every minister, every county, there's not just one service in these other counties, there's multiple services in these other counties, not just one. I think we're the only county, maybe it's wrong, that I, and I've checked, that has one service.
So, so is this a, is this an MOU we're talking about, or is this, what kind of agreement do we have? How do we overcome the agreement itself? Right, I mean, it's, it doesn't appear to be a, right.
So I'm, I'm not sure that legally means, I'm not sure that legally means.
Contract, right.
To the extent that they may consider it to be a contract.
Can we add that to the agenda as well, then, for the seventh, and then we can.
Well, I think that we should have a meeting with them.
We can, they can come on the seventh, and we're talking. Is it full?
And we've already had a meeting with them.
The twenty-first.
Okay, so the twenty-first, then.
Re-visiting the MOU between the nine-one-one center and Jan Care. I would just say agreement, not MOU.
Yeah, it's just an agreement overall, that says they get first dibs on everything. Yeah. I, I would like to have all the ambulance companies here on the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-first, twenty-first.
Priority and Jan Care and.
Well.
Twenty-first, same, yeah.
Well, and then there's also, I know the Mount Hope Fire Department has been filling in, too, it might not hurt to have them here.
Yeah, yeah.
As well, just so we can understand who can do what, and make sure. We need to have procedures in place to, to make sure our dispatchers know how to dispatch this. All right, I think we need to have the discussion, then have, um, Joy work with the nine-one-one center to get that procedure written up for our review and approval on, you know, the next meeting.
I honestly feel that we need to look at their procedure book.
Oh, well, no, there's a lot of that going on, but, but this is something that can't wait.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, you know, they, I know, have been reviewing their procedures, but I am going to be reviewing their procedures, too. But this is one that I feel like liability-wise and public safety-wise, that we just can't. All right, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're out of here.